Okay, we'll call the land bank meeting back to work. I think before we view or discuss the following locations, you guys want to accept the properties into the land bank? Make a motion?
I'd make a motion to accept all of the addresses into the land bank.
Second. Got a motion and a second? Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Passes.
I can get one.
Now would be the time to discuss the rest of the properties, what you guys want to do with them, what you think needs done with them.
I would say they're run down enough where it would be nice if they were just cleaned up. I think that's the purpose of why we bought them.
As far as like four, the four thirteen and four fifteen, the ones that have that garage together, those structurally, they don't seem in terrible condition. The one next door does and First Street does. I think we need to give individuals the opportunity to buy at least those two and fix them up. I mean, you guys need to keep in mind that as a council, we're, we're struggling with businesses and housing. And you guys know just as good as I do, if those houses come down, you're more likely not going to see anything go up, especially towards that side of town on Second Street.
Which were the two houses that you were bidding on that went up to three thousand, that you were bidding against somewhere?
It was that, it was those two.
The two with the double garage?
I believe so, yes.
That's the one that, that the individual that I've talked to wants to purchase those.
What, which ones?
The ones with the double garage?
And those are the one that pointed out.
Those, the two that you're talking about. He wants to purchase those. And he wants to know what the land bank wants to do, if he's, if the land bank's willing to sell them for what the city paid for.
I mean, there just, as a land bank, I mean, you put stipulations on when they buy those, don't you?
Yes.
We can, yes, yeah.
Because I mean, as far as I can see, I mean, it's just an eyesore. It's just more to look at. I think we at least put stipulations on it as far as siding, windows, roof.
He wants to get in there and he wants to get them shored up before it starts to get too cold. And before he can work on it, he wants to be able to get in there, fix them up a little bit, put them all squared away for the winter. And then, once spring comes about, he can start working on it full-heartedly. So it's up, again, it's up to the land bank what they want to do, but he's willing to purchase those from the land bank, one who paid for it, so.
I agree with Ryan. I think this should come down, lots made level, return to their natural state. If you have to do anything with it, turn it into a neighborhood park.
I, I think they're beyond repair is my opinion.
I just truly think that business that I'm in, you know, they're just too far gone. I mean, you could probably build a house that same size on that lot and, and be better off. Because, I mean, you'd have forty thousand in each of those, I really think. I mean, they, they're just, they're pretty far gone.
When I disagree, just like the house I've been working on on First Street, they're in the same condition as those. And as far as what I'll have in it with the house and supplies, I'll be in it about twenty-one thousand. And that house is going to be brand new, besides central heating here. I mean, as far as it being doable, you can't put those houses up for under a hundred thousand. I mean, who's going to put a house in that neighborhood for a hundred thousand? That's what I'm saying, as a council, we need to be looking at the future of the town. There's no housing, guys. And I mean, me as a council member, it's not right for me to buy them, but that's my vision, is I would do a stipulation where maybe by like fall of next year, have windows, siding, and a roof on it. And I could have renters in there in two years. But as a council member, I mean, I'm not willing to buy them. I would like to have the same, same stipulations on anybody that wants to buy them and maybe who will pay the most on it. But it's just sad to drive through town and just see lots there. It's just, you're never going to see houses there, I mean, not anytime soon. And there's two potential houses, the other ones I think are shot, the other two. I know you guys, you have three. It just...
I'm just afraid we'll never get someone with the right, right ambition to fix them up to what they need, you know? Where, you know, you put them out for bids for someone to buy and they're probably going to be back in the same state.
With the stipulations, though.
When you look at the changing demographics of the town and the age of the town, there's going to be a lot of houses that are a lot nicer that are going to come on the market in a few years.
I think they already are on the market.
They already are on the market.
I don't know. Everybody says there's no housing. I drive around and see nothing but for sale signs. I think it, I don't know if I go for the whole, there's no housing. There's, there's houses for sale all over.
There's plenty of housing if you want to buy it.
Yeah, that's exactly what I think.
I mean, how many calls a month do you guys get for houses for rent?
I mean, quite a bit. And we've, like, we've tried to keep a list of rentals for people, but it's...
How many, how many people a month that are renters that don't pay their city bill and are calling the next month and want another rental? Because that list overlaps tremendous.
Yeah, my, my no, yeah. I don't even, yeah, I'm not getting into that right now.
They need a rental. And then Jamie looks and then their last city bill on their last house, whether it was a year ago, whether it was six months ago, they stick the same.
But you can't put it on the whole city, I mean, as a whole. I mean, there's just those few individuals that ruin it for everybody else. Just think about it. I mean, we've been really blessed to have these two houses built in town over there on the west side of town and north of the school. We've been really lucky to have houses built. But before that, think about when was the last time somebody built a house? And who's, who in their right mind is going to build a hundred and fifty or a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar house in that neighborhood? Why don't we just have somebody that's willing to fix those up? More than anything, they're just an eyesore. And...
I think that if you put the stipulations on the homes at a certain time, as I see, Eastside said, if they don't follow through with it, then, I'm sorry, but friend or no friend, you know, if you don't follow through on what your word is, then they, you just lose out. You're asked out on the money, period. My friend seems to think that they're be, they're able to be rehabilitated. I don't know much about construction, but I trust his word. But again, you know, stipulations need to be put on there. And he needs to follow them just like anybody else.
That First Street house is a prime example that I'm fixing up, is that it was this close to getting torn down. I mean, just, we're this close to getting torn down. And that house is going to, it has all brand new plumbing, electric, sheet rock insulation, fifty-year shingles, the windows. I mean, and it's a house that's going to stay there. I mean, you've got to think about that, guys. I mean, it's just another house that's there. I understand you guys just want to lay them out and it's just ground again and you don't have the eyesore, but I just think there's people out there, whether it's me or somebody, that's willing to save them.
How long have you been working on your, for sure?
Year and a half.
And, I mean, that's your work. So how long is it going to take someone that doesn't? I mean, if it's taken you a year and a half, how long is it going to take someone that, you know what I mean, like?
Mine, that's why this is...
That's why your stipulation.
Thirty to fifty thousand in each one of them, fix it up.
And if it, if it doesn't get, if it doesn't meet the stipulations, am I correct on saying it reverts back to the city's land bank?
I mean, you can put whatever, you can put anything you want in a contract or on a deed to a property.
Then John gets involved, then we start paying money for that and right back to where we were at a year and a half.
I don't know how long that, that owner was an issue, but I feel like, I know it was troublesome for the two and a half years that I've been here.
I mean, I pretty much spoke in my piece on it, guys, that I think that as a construction guy, I mean, the roof line looked nice and straight. Roof's not caving in. The floor seemed straight, foundation seemed okay. I mean...
I heard it referred to as cocaine alley today when I voted. It could be easier to remove the alley. And I will move, and we destroy the three houses, all the houses, destroy and return the landscape to its natural environment.
Second. Got a motion and a second? All in favor? All opposed? Passes. Now what?
What's the avenue and what's the finances for doing that? Do we have some donation or...
I know there was a group of people that was willing to, had offered at one time. I don't know if that offer's still on the table. I can reach out to them and we can discuss it. I do know the SRT team, the Highway Patrol, had contacted me wanting to know if any of the houses that the city owns, if we would be willing to let them train in them. They went down to Kyle Bunker's house, the house that he bought off tax auction and used it. It's basically the special response teams for the Kansas Highway Patrol out of Greck Bend. They come down, they train in them. They did ask if we had any properties that we'd be willing to let them use. So that's something else you guys...
I think they're a hazard in the neighborhood the way they are.
Well, they're, they're talking until we get them to a ban or until we do whatever.
I mean, that could be kind of...
I, I think we should pursue the people that have expressed interest in demolition.
And, and I'm fine with that. I can reach out to them.
Give me a truck and bring my loader in. I'll donate my loader in time. I don't want to drive it fifteen miles. I think, I think you have some people that have offered that have trucks, loaders, excavators.
So from here, I'm actually looking to break down to them and get a time frame?
And gone.
Yeah, well, I mean, we can reach out to them and see if they're still willing to do what they wanted to do in the first place.
How, how have we funded the other, has the land banks cleared some other properties, haven't they?
We cleared, well, we did, the city actually paid for that.
Okay.
Oh, Broadway.
Yeah, the, the two property on South Broadway.
What did it cost us?
Sixty-five hundred dollars.
And that was about the, the house out on Fifth Street that was...
Regal's Dunn was like fifty-five or six thousand dollars. Fifty-five hundred or six thousand was roughly what those people that own that property paid to have that property cleaned up.
I would imagine if you're going to hire somebody to do it, full caution, that if you have the people that are willing...
Let's speak to the people that are willing.
That's why I think we should talk to people that are willing.
I don't know, maybe Jamie, you need to get a hold of Kansas Gas and make sure, I don't know if we want to have the guys dig up the sewer line too? Is that what needs to be done? Cap it off, Jeff?
We'd like to cap it off before, you know, after the demolition, before the people level the dirt back out. But I think we could probably make a deal with the county too, if we go to the commissioners to haul all that stuff out here. So you wouldn't be at the expense of the dumpsters like we did the other ones.
Would, would you suppose the county might be willing to provide some of their dump trucks to haul?
I don't know about that. I think they would waive the deed for hauling it in.
I don't think they'll do that. I do know that they said we, any individual or anybody could apply to have...
Dumping to waive.
Wave.
I know that one person had offered to do it, has dump trucks. And so...
Like you figure out who will help and get a timing either, as soon as we can. But I would definitely contact Kansas Gas because they have a gas line up to the house.
Yeah, we'd have to have the tap to take them back to the main.
Water tap, you're saying?
Well, the gas taps.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that too.
Because they're up next to the house now.
Right.
And then, you know, if we were going to, if we're going to level them out, why we could, as long as we can seal that, we ought to have some way to mark it. But we could GPS it, put it on our map. And then we, on, on the map that we have that has the utilities on it for that property. And then we'd know where it was, in case anything ever did take place after that.
Are all the utilities city-wise under?
They're cut loose.
Power, I mean, everything's off the houses and stuff?
I don't know whether he's got them all cut down.
Why didn't you cut that one down?
We've got a couple of them cut loose, I know, but it's not, you know, thirty minutes we can have them done, so.
I'd say we need to probably go ahead and do that too.
We just cut them back at the pole and then, so. But yeah, I know on the one that we did on South Main, we asked that the sewer, well, we did the same thing on Fifth Street, that we had twelve inches above the ground. And we had it capped off to where it was sealed off, so. We'd probably do the same thing there, unless we wanted to bury it and then we'd just GPS it. Seal it off, so.
Are you writing some notes, Jamie?
Yeah, I'm, we're in the land bank meeting.
That way when we mow it, we wouldn't have anything in the way for Dale to tag, so.
My computer's working fine.
That's another thing, you know, we don't necessarily want to mow it all summer. So want to get on this and try to get rid of them. Hope maybe there's some rain, you never know, but that, that would be kind of a pain in the hell with this.
Well, we could get the weeds sprayed in the spring and that would eliminate a lot of it.
Yeah.
I do know that...
So how do you guys feel about letting Highway Patrol use those for training until we tear them down?
I guess I don't have any problem with using them, besides the fact that as soon as we're ready to tear them down, they're coming down, we're not waiting on them.
I actually think they're only wanting to use it maybe one time this year, later this month, actually. But I, I know they wanted to do, I think one was the fourth and one was like the sixteenth or something.
I guess the other thing, when you guys are coordinating all this, to have a date set. I mean, everybody, there's going to be several people involved to discuss a date, that most of these guys are available. Right.
We have had, um, someone ask about the four twenty West Second Lot, um, the owner to the east. They, the previous owner let her store stuff in the shed that's on the property, assuming it's on the east side of the property. She was requesting if she could, um, buy part of that lot.
No.
Is that the little outbuilding to the north? Is that the little outbuilding to the north?
I assume that garage.
Yeah.
It's going to be hard, it's going to be hard.
The east house, probably.
It'll be hard enough to get rid of them as it is, and then we start cooking.
We'd be glad to see it leave with rubbing light pole the way it is. We'd like to see it gone.
On the, on the south side of the street?
On the north side.
No, she's talking the south side. She's talking the one, uh, east of John Fox.
Oh, the worst out building out of it.
I don't, that's what I was just thinking.
I don't know.
That's what I said, is it on the furthest east?
That old house, that's the only thing there, I think, isn't it?
So, I mean, that's just, it's not pressing because we're not to that point yet, but that is in the folder.
No, I also know that you, we did at one time, and I haven't spoken to him, the property on East First, a guy was interested in purchasing that and tearing it down himself. Do you still want to pursue selling that to him?
We'd tear it down himself.
If he will tear it down?
How much do we have in that?
I think eleven hundred or, what'd we pay for?
Sixteen hundred.
Sixteen hundred. Sixteen hundred, I think.
He paid back, he paid what we paid?
I don't know. He was willing to go a thousand dollars on it, but, I mean, that's what he ran it to, I think, before we stepped in and started bidding on it.
One problem, I just...
Like him to give what we gave, I guess. Seems like a little bit of conflict.
But it also takes, I mean, six, it's going to cost, it's going to be six hundred, more six hundred dollars for us.
Most of it all three people.
Yeah, but, I think that's still a conflict.
He was also at the auction too. Yeah. If he wanted it that bad, he could have.
I don't think six hundred always a life changer to be able to get it out.
I'm pretty sure he, I know there was a person get out at a thousand that was not even sucking better out, so. Said he didn't even jump in until after the fact.
Which one was that?
The Bean House?
No, this doesn't look very good.
Three oh two East First.
Because I have a price for twenty-eight hundred, a thousand, and thirty-one hundred.
Say that again.
A thousand, thirty-one hundred, and twenty-eight hundred. But they're like, they're the, like, they're the descriptions of like the blocks, not the actual addresses, so.
But which, how much was the one on First?
This would be...
What was the purchase price on First?
Hundred for it, did we?
That's what I'm saying, I don't want to...
I wasn't there, that's why I'm looking at you.
Well, I'm trying to remember. That, that may be right.
We did give twenty-eight hundred dollars for it. Because we gave a thousand dollars, a thousand dollars for four twenty West Second.
Yeah.
And we gave thirty-one hundred for four fifteen and four thirteen, and we gave twenty-eight hundred for three oh two East First. Yeah, because we spent just shy of seven thousand dollars.
Twenty-eight hundred on that one first?
That's right.
I say we just add that on to the list of the other ones, get the finger to grip together.
Yeah, that one will be way easier compared to them others.
It's a little open lot.
And I guess when we're looking at it, doing the, the demo on all those, we, we need to discuss, when we have help on it, to take the concrete out as well, the concrete, and probably bring in dirt. We need, I think we need to be discussing bringing in dirt. I think we need to plan on it. If we don't have to, that's great, but we need to plan on bringing in dirt. I think that needs to be in the discussion with the group of guys.
You all do realize that when we have bare properties, they're not worth what we paid for.
I tried pointing that out about fifteen minutes ago.
But it doesn't matter. I'm talking about even the one on East First. It's not worth twenty-eight hundred dollars.
Nope.
It's not worth twenty-eight hundred dollars standing. It's not worth twenty-eight hundred dollars to pour down.
First Street on the corner, I think it's probably worth that.
It's probably the most valuable one.
If it's cleaned up.
That, that's part of it too, you know? We can't just advertise it to one person and say, well, we'll take this.
Well, you could put it out for silks.
I'd say knock them down and...
Sorry, question to me. I came for the meeting, not the land bank meeting.
Whoever comes to us first and says they're going to do something with it and build something on it, we'll just get rid of it then. Anybody, whoever wants to build, the guy that wants to buy First Street, he wants to build a house, he's kind of not sure on it now. Whoever comes to us first, I think gets it, with a guarantee.
Long time ago, we adopted an application process and everything. Is that on the website with the land bank stuff?
I'm not sure if it's on the little website, but I have it all in the, in the...
Well, then we'll just continue and tear them down and worry about the properties later.
Whoever comes to us and with great ideas, then I'm willing to work with them.
Yeah, that, that application, I mean, it goes as far as having to describe what they're going to do with the property, submit plans, you know, that kind of thing. You guys literally can, based on whether it fits in with the community in that area or not, decide to accept or deny an application.
I'd say all of them, everyone on that list, that they all need to come down. It's, hopefully we can get a good group of guys.
You know who they all are, we'll reach out to them, or Jamie?
I'll get with Jamie and we can make phone calls.
I need to talk to him anyway.
Any other discussion?
Everybody around the table, right? Piece of equipment, easy.
Well, I think a little Kubota's going to do a lot of damage.
And I will take the deeds to the county office tomorrow.
We need to also contact Carl Miller because that way he can take them off the tax roll now that the land bank owns them.
Who did the deeds? Did you do them? Did you draft deeds?
From county, dude.
To the land bank? They could have put in the land paper.
We just accepted them.
But they, I thought they were just to the city?
They are.
So they'll be, to the land bank, if that's what you... I got you. That's what you meant by just accepting them. Sorry.
We just accepted the properties into the land bank. Yes.
You just get here late every time.
Well, anything else to discuss?
Have we adjourned?
Got a motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor? All opposed? Carries. Land bank adjourned.
Called this regular meeting of council as ordered, November fifth, two thousand nineteen, here at the city hall. Are there any additions to the agenda? Is there any citizens' comments this evening?
Just one, a suggestion, um, and it does, it worked in other little small towns too. I think it worked out great. When, during Fourth of July, so I know it's early, but maybe raise your taxes up to thirteen percent for buying fireworks for that day, or for that week when they're, when they're authorized for sale. That way those monies can be used for first responders in case something happens that night. Or that day, if somebody gets injured, then you have the money set aside for that. It will help anyway. Just a thought.
You said thirteen percent?
Yeah. Instead of the normal, whatever it is.
One percent?
Eight percent or...
Total is eight point five, but...
Just a thought.
Okay. Something that we could, we can consider for later day. Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other citizens' comments this evening? Okay, moving on. Consent agenda approved minutes, regular council meeting, October fifteenth, two thousand nineteen.
No.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Appropriation ordinance number eleven dash fifteen dash nineteen in the amount of sixty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries. All right. Here, moving on. Jeff Lannerman, water rights discussion.
I'm going to keep one of these, so I can talk to you about it, that I brought, kind of a spreadsheet showing your water rights and essentially your, the city's water use since nineteen eighty-four. The, and the reason I did it since eighty-four, we keep, we keep a water, uh, water rights, this is what we call water rights matrix. They have some, you have some uncertified water rights that were applied for in eighty-four that are still in their perfection period, so. Um, anyway, if you want to, want to pass it around, I think that's probably enough for everybody. But I think, um, when I was called, you guys had just received a letter with regards to the Quavira Water Rights Administration from the state. And, um, you know, everything changed the night of the meeting. So, and, and DWR didn't know about the Jerry Moran meeting until, you know, like, the day before our meeting here, so. Anyway, um, we found out more about it since then and we released a press...
There's more than one of those.
Yeah, there's ten of, there's ten of them.
I thought they were all stripped together.
So. So we issued a press release. We're not going to administer the junior water rights in the Rattlesnake Creek Basin in two thousand twenty. So essentially, um, you know, the, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service has said that they're going to work with water users in the basin, basin to come up with an acceptable solution. They're going to try to do that for a year. And so, nothing will happen in two thousand twenty, but we can't guarantee anything beyond that. So, um, this is our press release that we, that we released that, um, basically talks about that. There's ten of those there too. Anyway, as far as, um, if you go to the spreadsheet, as far as your water rights go, the, the water rights are kind of at the top of this spreadsheet. And you have basically four water rights for the city of St. John. The SF oh two is a vested water right, uh, which is, uh, it's basically senior to the Kansas Water Appropriation Act. It, there was water rights that were in place prior to nineteen forty-five. So, um, that's, that water right is basically senior to Quavira. It wouldn't be administered in anything that we do. It wouldn't be administered in anything that we do. Uh, you have eighty million gallons authorized under that water right. You have, um, water right three zero nine zero, uh, which is also senior to Quavira. You have an additional eighty-three point six million gallons under that water right. So, um, essentially, water rights that Saint John has senior to the US Fish and Wildlife Services, uh, right on the refuge, they equate to about a hundred and sixty-three million gallons. So, the only water rights that you have junior and the ones that you got letters on were, um, water right file number three seven one oh nine and three seven one one zero. Uh, those water rights add nine point four five million gallons per year and eleven point one million gallons per year. You know, for a total available to the city of a hundred and eighty-four, uh, point two million gallons. So, um, anyway, if you look at the ones just senior, the hundred, the hundred and sixty-three million gallons that you have, you know, on well two, well five, well three, and well six, you know, if you look at the, uh, total, um, use minus over pump column, if you look at just since, say, two thousand twelve, the city's only been using about anywhere from forty-eight to sixty-nine million gallons a year total. So, and they have a hundred and sixty-three million gallons senior to Quavira, um, I, based on that, I think Saint John's all right. So, um, regardless of what happens in the future.
So with the. Thirty ninety and thirty-seven one oh nine and thirty-seven one ten, are they connected to each other? Is that the ones in there listed together?
Those water rights were placed on top of well three and well six, so well three and well six have, um, two water rights, um, three zero nine zero and three seven one oh nine and three seven one one ten. So, those were just for additional water on those wells. Um, there is something coming up this year, um, that you guys are gonna need to be aware of. Um, the perfection period is ending, um, the end of this year, twelve thirty-one of two thousand nineteen. You'll probably be getting a letter here pretty soon that says your perfection period's ending. Um, you'll wanna, you'll wanna extend them. Um, we usually give, uh, forty years, uh, maximum to municipalities. I think the last time, um, if we gave you another five years, and that's what I would suggest that you ask for, um, give you another five years, um, that would put you out to like thirty-nine years. So we only give them five years in a chunk, so. Anyway, I brought, um, some extension request forms, and, see, the, the funny thing about this is, um, the thirty-seven one oh nine and, um, thirty-seven one one zero for additional water, you have to actually use more than, um, thirty ninety and SFO two combined in order to perfect any water under those water rights. So, you're gonna have to exceed a hundred and sixty-three million gallons to perfect any water under these. I don't know if that'll ever happen by the time you get to forty, you know, when they, when they were asking for those water rights, I think they were maybe, uh, hooking on to the roadside park at the time, or something like that, and they had some, they had some, uh, uh, some projections for some growth that probably weren't realistic. So, anyway, um, here's some forms, and I, and I made copies of your last extension request that you did in two thousand fourteen, if you wanna, you know, use that as an example of what to do.
If those were to be perfected, do wells have to be drilled? Is that, or they just perfect them under the thirty ninety well that's already?
You'll perfect it as additional water under the thirty ninety well.
So we can really perfect it without additional cost, just record keeping.
If, if Quavira makes their call, Jeff, in two thousand twenty-one, our junior numbers is thirty-seven one oh nine and thirty-seven ten, do you know the figures of what that nine point five and eleven point one will go to?
Well, you know, I, I can tell you.
Or I guess, well, that would've been in our letter, I should have.
Yeah, it was in, it was in your letter, and, and that was under, um, you know, the strict administration scheme that we were, that the chief engineer was gonna use. So, you know, um, I, I gotta say, I don't know what anything in the future will look like, yeah. So, um, anyway, we haven't heard anything that, that the services reached out to the groundwater management district or any of the water users in the area, but, um, we were under the understanding that that was gonna happen, so we've been in, uh, contact with the Denver office.
But essentially down the road, we wouldn't, even if they cut those two wells, or the two water rights, we're not really effective.
You'll, you'll have, uh, you know, like I said.
Hundred and sixty-three million? If we keep using the same amount of water that we use right now, assuming. Which we're using, what, forty-eight thousand per forty-eight million gallons last year?
A third of it, basically.
During the drought of eleven and twelve, we used seventy-nine million and sixty-nine million gallons.
So we're a long ways from even reaching the maximum of what we've got.
Of our vested.
Yeah.
Anyway, I think you guys are in good shape, so. That's all I had. Did you guys have any other questions?
Well, thank you very much for this, this is well the news.
No problem.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you very much. Alright. Thanks a bunch.
Okay. Alright, we're going to move on to departments. Before we move on at asset council, please not have any side conversations while we're in session here, please. Department heads and committee reports. City Superintendent Jeff Williamson.
I don't have anything, folks.
Anybody have any questions for Jeff?
I've been on vacation, so the guys have been taking care of the stuff while I've been gone.
Are there any questions for Jeff? Okay. Public utility supervisor Jason, you have anything?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Uh, Jeff, do you find anything from, uh, do we have anything from David? Did he mention anything?
He didn't have anything. The only thing we've got really going on is the guys are putting a riff on well number five, so they've all been out there trying to get it done, and as soon as we get done with that, why, if the, if the sewer stuff hasn't started, we're probably gonna start trimming trees, which will be after the winter project, but we're gonna trim them back, and, uh, we're gonna take what belongs to the city. So if people have any discrepancy about what's on the edge of the alley and that kind of stuff, they need to holler pretty quick, because we're gonna take them back.
So are those guys scheduled to come in to camera the sewers and stuff?
He said he'd give us a week's notice, he hadn't called yet.
Oh, really?
So, sometime in the next few weeks, don't know when for sure. Now, I would say that I got a call the other night from, uh, uh, Brett Finsky up in Hudson, and I was gonna offer it to him, I, I didn't figure really it affects mayors, it doesn't really affect the city, but he'd called about wanting us to rod all of their stuff, which we've done some rodding for them in the past, but I was gonna ask mayors if they would offer him the same kind of a deal, as an extra on top of what they're doing for us while they're right here in the vicinity, and then maybe get their stuff done without us having to go up and take care of it, because they do have some problems. Um, I don't know how much money they got spent, I don't have any idea, but I just, I haven't taken the time to call him since I've been off, but I, I will get ahold of him. And if the council doesn't have any objection, I'm gonna throw that out at him, and then he can deal with mayors, so. But while they're in this vicinity, they might take another, you know, I don't know how many thousand feet they got, they don't have a lot, but three or four thousand feet probably on top of that, I'm guessing. So, it would be a good chance for them to get theirs taken care of, uh, and looked at while they're out in this country, so.
Yeah, as far as I'm concerned, I mean, we probably just need to stay away from Hudson, I mean, we're not in the contracting business, and we got enough stuff to do ourselves.
I mean, you know, when they get in a bind, we're more than happy to help them, but if they could do that while they're here, it'd be great for everybody involved, so. Might save us a trip up there. I totally agree with Ryan.
Yeah, I think so too.
We need to be in the contract keeping process. Don't wanna be.
That's right.
Don't wanna be, so.
Okay, unless there's any more questions, moving on to grant administrator. From Lisa.
Lisa has been working on a few things. She told me that she plans to be here next meeting. Um, she did find some information on the truck lot that she'll present. Before David and Laura Davis and myself were, I, I, I put myself in the category, but it was really David and Laura working on a grant with, um, for new playground equipment. I think we had discussed it briefly, nothing ever came of it, um, but everything got turned over to Lisa. Laura, I think, um, just kind of removed herself from the project, so Lisa's gonna send all of that over to me so I can look at that and what our options are to move forward. Um, I think she said that Alan's asked her for a few things, that, so she's been checking on things for Alan, and we'll have a report back for the truck parking on the nineteenth, when she can come.
Alright, moving on, police chief, Chief Adams.
Um, update on the new truck, got moved up, it should be here mid-December, December fifteenth, within a day or two there. We, uh, working hard today, trying to finish up everything, go get the dog tomorrow, um, so we'll be working tonight to get the kennel put in the, in the cage, but the kennel's done at the residence for him outside, so that's finished. As far as touching back on the grants, I am looking at grants, um, one is tasers, um, all of our tasers are old, um, they're to the point where if I issue them out to an officer, and they have a split second, and they need that one second to use it, um, and it fails on them, then they're in a world of trouble. So, uh, those need to be updated, but those are, you know, I'm looking at grants for those, and, uh, two vests, uh, looking for grants on that. We did get the cage, um, donated, like I said, last meeting, out of Missouri, and the heat warning system has been mailed, uh, that's been donated out of Missouri too. So, everything dog-wise, we should be setting up pretty good and, and pretty well on that. Grant-wise, if we can get some grants, then we can get some equipment, um. This'll be kind of our one year, because next year, we should be, we should be right on line with budget, so, um, try to fix what we can fix now, uh, because it needs to be fixed, and then, uh, we can go on from there, so, that's all I got.
Anybody have any questions for Chief? Chief, looking over at the administrative report, Officer Perez is doing really good over at the academy.
Yes, um, yeah, she's, uh, seven more weeks, thank goodness, um, I tried to see if she could test out and come back early, but that's, that's not happening. But yeah, she's doing really well, um, so real happy with how things are going there, she's looking forward to getting back, and, and, uh, she wanted to let me know, uh, counsel, uh, tell you guys hi, and, uh, she appreciated the support.
If we had any other, um, takers on, uh, applications?
We've had a few, um, for the canine position, um, nothing I would, uh, I would trust with a dog at this point, um. Just kinda looking at some of the background, so I've gotta dig a little bit further in. Uh, right now, I'm just going ahead and planning that I'm gonna be running the dog, um, just, cause I am gonna be a little bit picky, I want the dog run, and I want it worked right, and I, you know, I, I don't wanna end up with a pet in the back of the vehicle for five days a week. Um, if we're gonna put all this time and money and energy into getting it, then it needs to be utilized as best as we can utilize it, so. Um, just gonna kinda, kinda be picky about that, um, if we pick that, so.
Alright. Okay, moving on, fire chief, Michael.
I don't have anything.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Michael? Moving on, city administrator, Jamie.
I leave Sunday for school, so I won't be here next week. Pam will be holding down the fort. Joyce has been coming in, she came in this afternoon, and we got her started on being able to take, um, payments, and she's actually gonna work, uh, Friday. So we'll see how the fifteenth goes, um, and if anything varies from that, I will just request to come home early from school. I think school's half a day on Friday, so if that ends up not working out, then I will just come home. Pam's going on vacation the week after I'm at school, and the way that it worked out, her flight needed to be Friday, so we're gonna have Joyce come in and, and get that taken care of. She seemed, I mean, it's, entering in payments is pretty painless, so. We got her ready to go. Um, I've got a few conversations going on, yard violation letters and, um, just that kind of house cleanup letters, so I'm gonna be looking into continuing that, and coming up with more of a schedule of keeping up on the yard maintenance, or the yard violation letters, just to make sure that things are being cleaned up, and, and hopefully some of these information letters that I sent out about vacant homes will just get those conversations that need to be started.
Do they have a timeline on that, or what was the, was the process?
The yard violation?
Yeah, well, but vacant, or dilapidated housing.
The yard violation has fifteen days from the day that I mail, um, and, and then I think the process splits, the way that I'm reading it, if they accept it and sign it, where, or if they're refusing to sign. So, Friday, I'll need to go out and check. I mean, I've had conversations with a few, and, I mean, it just, some.
Mostly sanitary?
Most, yeah.
Mostly.
The ones that haven't claimed, um, are most of the bigger issues. So, we'll have to figure out how to go forward with that, but we'll get it, and, but the information letter, the informational letter that I sent out was basically, we're working on a community cleanup initiative, what can you do to help, here are some options. It doesn't, I'm, I'm, I'm not pushing at this point, just trying to let people be mindful that we are working on the, the empty and vacant houses. What can we do to?
Any other questions for Jamie? Moving on, city attorney, John.
I don't have anything.
Anybody have any questions for John? Oh.
Can I go back to mine real quick?
Yes.
Just real quick. I also wanted, I forgot to mention today, today we had a show meeting with the students, the, uh, the students helping out warriors there at the high school. Um, so we do have that program, it's up and going, and it's, and it's running now. Um, I asked the council, I know you guys are all busy and you have things going on, but, uh, November eleventh at nine o'clock, we are gonna hold our first annual, uh, veterans, uh, program there at the school. Um, so if you guys can make it, uh, if you can get the word out, um, you know, it's our first one, we're gonna build on it, but it, it's gonna be pretty good, and I'd, I'd like to see if we, if you guys are able to make it, if you can come in, and that more, and just make an appearance, and I'd appreciate it, so, that's all I have on that.
Alright, thank you. Alright, moving on to old business. Now, most of this stuff is on, old business is on the administrative report, is it really necessary for us to keep all of this stuff on the agenda?
I mean, yeah, because you'd never get anywhere if that, that was the point.
Yeah, but this is the point right here. She's on top of it, that's why we put her in the administrative report.
I don't know, I would just keep it on the old business, I guess. You have a problem with making a little report, and then we can take it off once it's fully done.
And it doesn't bother me to have it on there.
I don't think we need to discuss everyone on that right now.
I mean, just, yeah, as long as it gets accomplished, you know.
I think that's the whole point. I don't think we need to discuss everything, if this is on here, if you have questions on any specific item, go ahead and bring it up. Alright, so unless you have any questions on any of the old business.
The utility truck, I know you, you'd sent out an email on this. You were saying it's gonna cost us fifteen hundred plus tax to get in the truck?
It's worth it, I mean.
I mean, if that's the case, I'm, I'm still in favor of doing it, I don't think you.
I want one.
I, I, I just don't think at fifteen hundred dollars, you can, you can't go wrong, so.
We don't have a timeline though?
He wasn't able to give me a timeline, just because GM had just come back from strike, so.
I guess my only thing is, is when we do this this time, I'd like to have some solid written.
There shouldn't be, if it's a GMC program, there should be some kind of literature.
I don't know that, see, and that's when I went back to.
Cause how do they track that it's being sold to the city?
Right.
How do they know it's, that we're involved in this company?
And he, the, when I talked to, to the owner of the company, he talked like it was something that he did.
Maybe it is, but I'd still like to have something in writing saying that.
Yeah, I'm not, we're not going forward without paperwork.
That way there's no he said, she said.
Don't forget what you agreed to, if you write it, yeah, that's the change.
Don't forget what you agreed to. You write it, yeah, that's the change in it, so per year.
And the, the time will be a little bit, we, we had a little bit of discussion about like the difference between two-wheel and four-wheel. We decided that, you know, Jeff had talked like he never really used his four-wheel drive, but to get, to get a two-wheel truck, two-wheel drive truck, like, they just don't really, it'll take longer for us to get the two-wheel drive than a four-wheel drive, cause they're gonna have to manufacture it, is basically what he was telling me. So, that might be-
I mean, I want it has a four-wheel drive and I do use it to pull out the two-wheel drive pickups.
If you're gonna have a utility truck that has to run in absolutely the worst weather of the year, snowstorms, ice storms, we might as well have four-wheel drive to get around.
That is an option.
I mean, I got along without four-wheel drive for years, but you tear up left stuff.
I guess I'm not opposed to a four-wheel drive if it's here quicker and we can get it done, depending on-
It's gonna be more money though.
Depending on how much-
This one is a two-wheel drive.
I, I wanna say, didn't it, didn't it say like something like four or five thousand dollars more?
I'm sure.
I thought we already had a four-wheel drive. Looking for price, I guess. But it's probably easier for him to get rid of the two after we give them back to him.
Probably why he wants to do it.
Yeah.
You'd only have one year of it, I would think.
And probably a timeframe on it, isn't it? Have him check the timeframe. I mean, we need to have a date, otherwise this can get pushed on for another year, the way we've been dealing with the company. So, I mean, I'd like to push him-
Actually, once I got ahold of him, he, it's been fine.
Okay.
So, I will take care of it.
Are there any other questions on, on old business? Street signs, we're just like gonna get them next year, apparently?
Probably. He just won't get, he won't fix a date. The, the company that's making them, they won't fix a date on when they'll be here, so.
I'll check on that.
I will check on that.
I guess you could ask him if we need to find another company to do our signs for us.
It's taking this long, I agree. Okay, any other questions regarding old business?
Uh, the wood center repairs, Ben never brought anything to me, so.
I may be asking, I forget how the proposal was, but, I mean, I personally would like to see carpet in the, like, the lobby area, I guess you'd call it, instead of-
Polished.
Polished concrete, just safety factor, I guess. I mean, it's kind of where you blow down noise too, just as an option.
Did we ever hear anything from the rec board on if they were willing to help us?
Their meeting is after ours, so they were gonna get back to me as soon as-
Yeah, I think it's, uh, yeah, I think they did have a meeting, but it did say on here that-
I wanna say the-
Eighteenth.
Yeah, I was gonna say the nineteenth, but.
He sent out an email on me.
Yeah, and that, and Ben's, Ben's, and, or, Ben did have an option, but, I mean, we're just waiting. Yeah, it had like the, the carpet or the polished concrete, but now we're just waiting on picking out carpet. So, I'll let them know, I'll let them know that we might need options for the wall and then maybe for the actual carpet too. I don't know if we want the same, I don't know that we would want the same carpet for the wall compared to the floor.
Senior citizens, are they allowed to, in this building, they use it, are they allowed to, did they-
They don't pay nothing, it's for them.
Well, that was part of the agreement, that's part of what the building is for, for seniors and then everybody else.
Because of the original agreement, that's what it was.
They're, they're senior this, I guess.
They're vested in that deal.
Or the leasing.
I think they're part of their building or their, their room, you know, they said the carpet is okay, you know, they're not just satisfied with it.
Yeah, they, they said it was, looks nice over, well, super nice, but it's doable.
They're not upset by it.
Yeah, they're not really.
How are they funded?
I think they get some money through the state and I don't know if that's monthly or yearly or annually or-
Check into that, it was very minimal, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Creditly minimal, I thought.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't recall what the annual payout to them was.
I don't remember how much it was all that much.
To find out on something like that. Okay, unless there's any other questions or regarding items on old business and moving on to new business.
Administrator report does look nice to me.
Yeah, it does. Very well, very well done, Jamie.
I don't know. My advisor.
Okay. Uh, let's see, BCBS Insurance Renewal.
So, we got the premia or the, it's open enrollment for insurance, so I gave you guys the total, um, it was a, an increase of eleven or, like, eleven to twelve percent. And when I asked about that, um, basically it's the cost of people getting older. And what I didn't realize was it is also the cost of insurance in the area, like, if people go to the doctor more, you get to pay for that. So I didn't realize that.
Is that for the whole year or is that a month? The three hundred ninety-five, forty-one?
It's gotta be a month.
Yeah.
So.
No.
If, if it's less than that, it's gonna be a month.
No, I get my, I get my spreadsheet open for you. Hang on just a moment.
One percent more. Forty-eight hundred dollars, yeah. Not quite.
Eleven percent, eleven percent, so we're eight hundred per year?
Sometimes I know the council, it never went down. Wait for that.
There was one year that they wanted to change it and get out of the grandfathered policy that we're in.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we had charts and everything.
And it would have been a, I, I mean, yeah, it would have saved the city money.
Yeah, it's monthly.
But our employees-
Right.
Would not have had good insurance.
Yeah.
Yeah, our plan is awesome.
We decided to leave it alone.
I can say that right now.
I mean, I guess that's what we kind of base off. We have a good policy for our employees and I don't think we need to get away from it.
And there are some, some additions, there's like, um, yeah, there's additions.
What is the tot, the cost, the total cost of the package per annum?
Our total cost?
Yeah.
The city's total cost?
And I know, depends on, pardon?
Did you ask the annual or monthly?
Per annum. Annual cost.
I think we were only at eighty thousand.
That's what I'm saying, eighty thousand. So-
And then I think there's-
That would be eight to nine thousand dollars if-
Yeah, I don't, that is a bad assumption.
Then that-
Well, I've said it one time, I don't know what it is.
Yeah, I would think it was around eighty.
It's a little over fifty-three thousand.
Total, or total.
With, with accepting this, with accepting this one, it will be with the new premium.
A little over fifty-three thousand per year. See, we've actually cut it in half since-
Yeah, since we did.
Yeah.
And, and the employee pays fifteen percent.
Right.
And it used to be ninety-five-five.
Yeah, when it was ninety-five-five, we were paying roughly a hundred and twenty thousand a year for health insurance. But I say, I, I'm perfectly fine with leaving the insurance alone.
So this is a month, like thirty-nine, five's a monthly, so about five thousand dollars a year.
Forty-eight hundred dollars.
How much did it go up last year?
Uh, last year, I don't think it changed. It was two years ago.
Two years ago, yeah.
When I got on, you guys were discussing it?
Had the, had the big hike and then we cut back to-
That's when we changed it, yeah. I mean, it had an eleven percent increase and then that's when we turned it over and, and put it from ninety-five-five down to eighty-five-fifteen.
That's a big hurt.
And then most of our savings right now is because of attrition of employees.
That's twenty-two percent in two years, that's what I'm saying. Maybe in three or four years, we can actually check again the prices. That's a lot of money, twenty-two percent in two years.
Well, I have Medicare for All in three years, don't worry about it.
I checked the contract, yes.
I'd make a motion that we approve the Blue Cross and Blue Shield contract with the eleven percent increase.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to ordinance ten sixty-seven dash nineteen.
Any questions?
It's kind of what we wanted.
Yeah, that's Greg's language.
He can make the motion for it to be in a, like I said, it would be in effect for the next billing cycle, but.
I'd make a motion to approve ordinance number ten sixty-seven dash nineteen.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to sewer maintenance.
We don't know when they're gonna be here for the cameras.
He said he'd give us a week's notice.
Yeah. It's leveled out now since-
We've taken care of the stuff that needed taken care of and we're just kinda waiting on them, so. We picked out ten thousand feet that we thought were probably the heaviest used for this time around, hoping that we can work out some kind of deal to do some every year for the next few years and take care of some of the others that we've had. But these are the first ten thousand feet that we think probably needed the worst, that carry the most amount of water, so, um, that's what we picked out to do, so.
And they have, Jason created the water maintenance, uh, map and he has like the maintenance schedule for that. And I believe that they have a sewer maintenance schedule being-
Yeah.
I don't know.
We're still working on it for some dailies and weeklies, that stuff, yeah.
So, that is something that has been-
Soon as I get back, I get time to sit down and do that. We used to have, when I was here before, we used to have a route that we did, we had some that we checked every day and then we had a section that we checked once a week, so that everything got checked at least monthly on the stuff that really didn't get problems. But we did have some, but we just kept an eye on and checked them daily, so, uh, I couldn't find the old books that were here. Somebody evidently let them slide out the door at one time or another, but, um, tried to sit down, drive around and figure out where we used to go and look at them so that we get the main lines checked as well as like the dead ends. We had a lot of problems with dead end stuff, you know, a block or two long, so, um, soon as I get back, I'll get them put together and we'll have a system that the guys will check on a daily and a weekly basis, so.
The backup sewers on the west side were all resolved.
Well, that's, you know, we have a lot of problems with the pipe on part of that and we know that we have pipe problems there and that's one of them that we're gonna take care of, but, you know, as the pipe ages and the cracks get bigger, why, the maintenance schedule gets quite a bit rougher in the fall and the spring are the two times a year when the roots move the most, so, we're gonna try and-
Pulled out a couple towels and a tee-shirt on there.
Yeah, you know, we're not, not the normal usage of what goes normally down the pipe, it's the other, I mean, we found chunks of concrete, you can't imagine what we found.
Well, in, in that area, it's consistently having shop rags in it.
It's been, it's been in one general area where we've had the most problems. We think maybe that that's gonna be less now because of-
People moved.
Residents, yeah, that's a nice way to say it. We're hoping anyway, but it was towels that don't deteriorate and don't break down in water, so. When you have to send a guy in a manhole to pull them out, it's pretty rough, so. Anyway.
Wasn't Jason apparently.
It was, that was the thing. He's the only one you can get to do it. My burnt mate guys will do that, you know?
I did, um, I coordinated with David and we, I, I'm not, I don't know if they went out to the health department and got, but we had discussion about needing to make sure T-DAP shots were taken care of. So.
We'd like to offer them to them anyway, to the guys, you know, hepatitis isn't really bad. It does cover it, that's great.
They should. I, I sent them all-
They've all had it offered to them, so.
They shouldn't go on, so.
Yeah. I think it should be just part of our benefit package if the health insurance didn't pick it up. Cause it's a lot easier to prevent disease than it is to treat it.
And if they don't have insurance, I advised them to check with their insurance and then was gonna present it, but I think everyone-
I think if they don't, if they don't take our city insurance and they want it because it worked for us, we need to pay for it.
I agree.
Before you ask them to do something like that.
Do we need a motion or a general agreement or?
I think the cost is minimal. I'm the only one that makes any difference, nobody else can take them.
I don't think we need a motion or anything.
I'll send them somewhere to get it administered.
Yes, we'll do it in the back of the shop.
Okay, unless there's any more questions, moving on to, uh, discussion regarding handbook comp time.
I printed off, um, the, the piece of the handbook that was previously discussed and I just, I highlighted, I think in everyone's packet, just what you guys had accepted for overtime pay and comp time. So you can be aware and if, if we need to make any changes, that's where it needs to be done. But I want to allow enough time, if changes are made, that our employees are aware, so they can be ready for it. I think we talked about if changes are made January one, they go to the-
Probably by like next week too.
I think we should just get overtime and not comp time.
Yeah, I think that's what a lot of people leave anymore. I don't, I would just in-pay our guys overtime.
Would too. It'd be easier to keep track of it.
I know some of them like having the comp time, but I also think that if we're comping time out, you know, we're losing a day or an hour and a half to every hour of overtime cause that's how you have to comp it out. And if we get too many people with comp time, we don't have time to do our other projects, or we have people that are gone for three weeks, you know, at a time because they have vacation, comp time, everything. I, I would just rather pay them for the work they do and keep our guys here.
Well, that when they show up and work their, their shift and their work schedule for the weekend.
I don't think, I know at one time they said it hurts them on the taxes. I don't think anybody puts in enough overtime for the city of St. John to affect you on your taxes that much. Yeah, they might hold out a little bit more, but ninety percent of the time you're gonna get it back at the end of the year.
Get back with a higher tax return because I don't think that wages are a real benefit to another tax bracket.
I could maybe see it if we had a whole week where our guys were working twenty-four seven because we had a bad storm and lost everything. Yeah, they might put in overtime that it would hurt them, but that's once in a great while. That's my opinion on it. I'd just in-pay them out and it, it's less work in the office, less stuff we have to track. Makes everybody's jobs easier.
Okay, Council, do you want to, uh, do away with, uh, comp time then? Does anybody wanna make a motion on that?
So we basically make it effective January one?
Yeah.
Yeah, because right now they have until, if they haven't used it by December thirty-one, it's paid out to them as overtime. So, I would, I mean, I'm, yeah, January one.
So is that your motion or what?
I'd make a motion to remove comp time from the handbook.
Can we do it this? Yeah, I guess that's okay, that's clean now. We just be removing these, uh, it's the old one, chances of removing it. So what we really need to do is motion to, to end compensatory time and, and give, uh, Jamie authority to make necessary adjustments to the handbook.
That would be my motion. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. All right.
So you'd have to go through the same process of, you know, handbooks, collecting signatures. So you'd have to go through the same process of handing out handbooks, collecting signatures and handing it out.
Sorry, Jamie.
Any other changes we want to make before January one, so we can just?
Okay. Surprisingly, we have no executive sessions, so having said that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor? We're adjourned.